Having said that, I guess the next thing will be the sound of Dandy. You're on the spot.
Gus, do you have anything for the Tyrone more than what you already told us?
The only thing I have to figure.
Is that still a cop rider farm?
Exactly.
What are they subdividing?
Subdividing a couple lots off it.
Thank you.
And it's in their residential zone, one of this. And of course, the part that's in Huntington is up here. Right along the, between the creek and the road. No, not really. It's a fluke.
Is it the rocks? Is that touching your ground or family ground in there? Probably up there along.
Yeah, it comes up, butts up against the covered bridge.
Covered bridges.
Yeah.
Them are the, the two lots are up against existing houses.
When you go across the covered bridge, then you're immediately on there.
So what are they, what are they doing, Gus?
There are two lots down here.
They're below the existing buildings, right?
Yeah.
The existing, right under the two lots.
Torus well up.
Right there.
This one, this one. I, you can't read it really, so I'm waiting to get the paper plan. Just wanted you to know that that's coming.
Their house is around the corner there, right there.
Well, they put the new one.
Yeah, they put, torn over and down for.
It's double wide.
Double wide up there.
Yeah, that's not double wide.
Well, I mean, two basically looking like.
They brought them in, yeah. Are they two different sizes than new lots?
Who the hell can read it?
Actually, it's really not our concern.
No.
None of the houses. We just got that little strip up there in the.
Right up there in the top, between. Creek and the other, right? That's Roxy wants to sell some swamp land.
I'll snuggle in there.
Great. So what did you give us today?
So this is the revised definition section. It, all your edits and a couple things that Scott and I needed to show you cleaning up. On page three, you'll see I have a phrase highlighted. That was showing you that we added that term in there under the definition of developer. If you go back to page 10, you'll see I have, so there's one, two, and three. There's five different terms highlighted there all having to do with sewer and sewage. When Scott and I met on Friday, we spent most of the time going through the ordinance and the depth, because there were, there were keys. Two, three, four, five. There were seven different terms for sewage and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10. 11 different terms for sewer. And they didn't always mean what they were supposed to mean for the way, where they were used. So we've narrowed it down to these five here. And some of them you'll see reference others. So where it says, where we're using the term sewer, we're talking about the piping or facilities for collecting, collecting and conveying sewage or stormwater runoff. That's, that's the mechanical side of it. Where we told, where we use the term sewage, that's talking about the effluent that we're getting rid of. Disposal system, sewage disposal system is referencing one property, one use. Treatment system is referencing two or more, we pull up, pulling those pretty much from the state law that, that covers those sort of things. We've, we've spent a lot of time, a lot of the different ways it was used. It was, it was simply like clarifying, it was like private sewer, you know, that, that sort of thing. It's, it, we're talking about the ownership or the, the, clarifying what it, how it was functioning, not what, what it was actually doing. So we think those five terms make it a little cleaner and more consistent throughout the whole. And there's, there's a whole bunch of changes that we made throughout the rest of the, the rest of this SADO, which I might have, I might have bothered to show you all, all of that. The only other thing that I highlight is, highlight it from page five. And this is something that's kind of related to the zoning stuff. One of the issues we found, when it comes to stormwater ordinance as it relates to subdivision ordinance and zoning, is there, there's a difference between what the stormwater ordinance, what we're just would consider impervious and what you might wish, want to be considered impervious from a zoning perspective. For example, under stormwater ordinance, you could have, say, a 10 acre property that has, you know, five acres under building and five acres of, of pervious paving. And by this, by the stormwater, it would only be 50%. From a zoning perspective, you might not want, it would all, it would be considered, you know, if you consider the pervious paving imperv, you know, pervious for a zoning perspective, now you have a whole property that's essentially paved, you know. And a lot of it is trying to put some limitations on that. So one of the ways that we've seen this done is, and I highly, highly is because the, this again, this is zoning issue that we would want to put the same depth terms here in this, in the SADO, is, and you have a little bit of this in some of your zoning districts where you have a, like an impervious coverage percentage and then a building percent, a minimum maximum building percentage. The approach that we've seen is you do a, like an impervious coverage, a lot coverage percentage, and then a vegetative coverage percentage. And usually it equals 100. So if you have a impervious, you know, pervious coverage percentage of 40%, vegetative cover 60%. What that, what that does is, it, I mean, it said, basically says that, okay, zoning perspective, what we're saying is impervious, we mean is impervious. And what we, everything else, we mean that's vegetation. That's not, you're not putting pervious paving in there, you're not putting some, some other trick in there. We mean it's natural of some sort. It sort of closes a loophole that's cropped up as pervious techniques become more popular. Again, the Jim, will you guys face a lot of that? No, probably not. Will, will more developed municipalities face that? Yeah, they will and are. But if you, it, it's also the side of the sort of thing that when it crops up here, you're going to want, theoretically want something to, to help with that. So if, if you're, if that's something you're interested in, the, the lot coverage and vegetative, vegetative coverage sent, power definitions would come in. The last sentence highlighted under impervious surface would be removed. That, that would be, be the potential change. So that would, that, the net effect would be, from a subdivision zoning perspective, everything that's, that says impervious, it means impervious surface. When it says vegetative, it means everything else has to be vegetation of some sort.
I, I have a question. You said an example of a pervious surface. I was at a home some time ago where the whole driveway was these blocks that looked like large checkers and in between was grass. Now, is that considered an impervious driveway or a pervious?
It could be impervious depending on what those rock, checkers are sitting on.
Okay, I, I can be.
It means they're, they're blocks, you know.
Right, but what, what Gus is saying, if they're sitting basically on a stone dust bed compacted down.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what was under them.
Well, I got a block back in my office that's shaped somewhat crosswise, but it's meant to be mounted on about a foot of.
Okay. I, I mean, I, I'm asking because I was curious as to what it is considered, you know, because it looks like, you know.
Yeah.
A grass with.
Well, I saw in Carlisle.
Almost like pavers.
There, there are blocks and then there's a, a space in between, like a hole. And that's got a tuft of grass growing up.
Right.
And you mow it with a weed whacker.
Well.
But that's considered imperv, or pervious for the sake of that development.
In other words, it could be a walkway. It could be that way.
It's a driveway.
This was, this was a driveway probably, well, probably six, 700 feet long. It's out there off of the, Gettysburg in the woods there next to the Peace Lake. It belongs to. The developer.
Lot?
No, 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 no. So. I mean, it's a real.
They make plastic grid that you don't even see. It just looks like lawn. It spreads the, the load out from the tire.
I have a great exam, example. Any of you familiar with the, the wedding barn there off of Dixdam Road? Bittersweet or whatever. There's a grass area to the creek side that is parking lot, but they have the Geotek style reinforced plastic that's been pushed down to reinforce the grass to use that as a, as a parking area. That sort of thing, that, that was the thing that from that ordinance perspective, which is where, which uses this model, that's considered pervious there. Now, if something like, if, if you're familiar with the, like over, where the, the Ag Center, you come in, in the drive, main driveway, there's the park, paved parking to the right. Then there's the overflow there to the, to the left. That's the, that's those, kind of what you're, what you're talking about. That's, that's closer to perv, to, to impervious. The interesting thing about that is, and I, I use somebody, I can't remember the name of the bird. It's the ones that nest on the ground.
Killdeer.
Killdeer.
Yes. There's a killdeer that, that every so often makes her nest right in the middle. Not, where the parking areas are, right where you drive, right town in, in there is where she, she makes her nest in one of the blocks in, in there. But yeah, it's, if you walk over it, that one, it's, it's all, it, it, there's grass growing through it.
Yeah.
But it's more weeds than anything else.
Yeah, but it's still considered impervious.
From a, from a stormwater, from a stormwater perspective, ordinance perspective, yes. From a zoning, zoning risk perspective, it's probably not. But that's, that's sort of the example is to be trying to make, make sure that you want the stuff that's veget, you don't want to get extra impervious surface.
Yeah.
You know, by using a loophole. So that's, that's the theory, the theory behind it.
I get it. That's why I was.
They have that porous concrete and porous blacktop all of a sudden.
Yeah, we've got that run, or they put that down at school or track. Pervious concrete.
But you have to vacuum that stuff.
That's not maintained. It's not.
Being impervious.
It shows up as silversome. It feels so short to be impervious.
And again.
Right. And that's, that's, that's the problem. That becomes the problem, especially if it's not maintained, then.
Instead of areas, whole let, whole, less water than that does.
Yeah.
But they're impervious.
If they're, if they're built properly.
Yeah, they have to, have to be from the ground, say from the ground up. They have to have a base that either pours in a, in a perk or that they take, you know, piped out underneath. So around here, it's hard to get a, a base that's able to infiltrate anything.
And again, like the example I'm putting here comes from Hamilton Township where we started this. The issue they have is infiltration in, in the formations they have, like you're familiar up here. It doesn't, stormwater that requires infiltration only works if it'll actually infiltrate. If you're, you're on the diabase or the red clay, you're not infiltrating a lot, a lot of water. So it, what's the point of, of those techniques?
This one, page five there, you have surfaces, highlighted surfaces or areas designed, constructed, maintained.
That, that would, that would be removed.
That'll go out.
Yeah, that would go out and the other two definitions would come, the terms would come in. And then we'd ideally mirror, theoretically mirror that into the zone.
So that's what we want. We want to remove that sentence and then put in lot coverage and veget, vegeta, okay.
That's.
It's a gray, it's a gray area. I know dealing with, between soil conservation or NPDS requirements. They allow certain things and it's, it's a little tricky.
Yeah. And again, the, the amount of times that you might face it are going to be different than a township that like, except where it comes from, that is right by Crosskeyz. He gets a lot of stuff. So. But with that, with that, the, the, the SADO is pretty much. Not complete, so.
So other than that, you ready to give us a draft then?
Yeah, what I would, what I would do is probably put the draft, put the draft together and send, fold the draft together and, and send it to you. I, I don't know what your, from a perspective of the township's policy is. It, it might be a good idea to ship it to Todd, just to look through it from a legal perspective. But that's, that's your, I'll send it to Gus. You guys can decide what you want to do with it. But it, it's at that point now that we're pretty well done with it and you can get to what went out. Again, there are some things from the zoning perspective that go with it. But, you know, that's, that's, that's a different perspective. So I can do that and then you guys can take it from there. I, I heard what you said about the, the zoning stuff that I, that I sent out here. And again, there's a lot, there's a lot here. What I did was simply go page through the ordinance and note the stuff that I, that I saw. That doesn't, that doesn't mean it had, mean it has to change. It's just that, you know, like, like here, this section uses that. Those are the things that, you know, discuss about, about adding. Like the small wireless facilities, there's a state law that got adopted that requires that. There's specific standards apply within right of ways. It's, it, it's, you gotta add it whether you like it or not. But, you know, and a couple of other things.
Elevators, that's usually internal window.
I did research, research that and what I found was, in most cases, if it's in, contained inside the structure, it's, it's not a zoning issue. It's a code issue. It becomes a zoning issue if it, if it extends outside and then it, then it's usually simply a height issue. But it's not necessarily a zone, a zoning issue by itself. It's a code, as long as it's contained within the structure. Then, you know, like, like data centers. There's, there's, we have a model that's flown around the county for those, those sort of things. You know. You know, the same, I would, with those, I would say the same thing like the warehouse and truck turmoil stuff. We have new standards. You have an interchange. Now, from a top topography's perspective, it's not the easiest one to use. But it's still there. So you should probably protect yourselves with some of the standards there just in case. Because for example, if warehouse wanted, wanted to put in, come into the commercial district, it's not a, no skin off their teeth to pop Southwood Road down to 94. And if they, if they really, 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 really wanted to, when they're spending eight face, six, what? Eight figures plus on a, on a building and property, that's nothing. So if you don't have, have standards in there to deal with it, you're, you're behind. The only difference between data centers and warehouses is.
Trucks.
What, traffic. You know, the building's the same, building's the same size. The impacts are slightly different. One's noise, noise emissions from trucks. The other is noise and water from cooling equipment. So.
They require, data center require probably upgrading electric to supply into the place.
Like you said, is there, the chances of it are low, but given the location you have here at 9415, you know, you'd probably rather be safe than sorry to have, not having anything in there.
Well, we just had, I mean, you guys were familiar with that down there in Hamilton Township. Pressure they had in there.
Yeah. In fact, we just, that, we, they, their. Wednesday, they have a special supervisors meeting to advertise the amendment for the new standards that we wrote for them, to put those, those in place. So we have a pretty good, pretty good model there that, that covers most of the, most of the impacts. So, you know, then a lot of it, like uses to reevaluate is just, yeah, identifying things of, hey, let's, you know, let's talk about some of this, some of this stuff here. The one thing I wanted to bring up here is going through your, your, looking through your zoning ordinance, as a township, you might have more conditional uses in your zoning ordinance than if the other 33 municipalities in the county combined. And from my perspective, I, I get it. It's either by right or it goes to supervisors. My, my question is, from a college perspective, that's an older approach, is that's still what you want. You have some things that are listed as conditional use that have no standards with them. So what's the point of a hearing if they have no standards with, form of standards with them? That, that's, that's sort of thing that I was looking at as I, as I was going, going through. That doesn't mean it has to change. It's just, let's, it's been 20 some years since this has been looked at seriously. Let's, let's talk about it. Then the, the, you go through the definition section there, you can see the things that, you know, might need to be revised, might just need, need to be looked at. The individual districts just looking for reformatting some, some things. There's some question, like you see, it talks about discuss lot coverage and pervious coverage interaction under the AC district. That's the sort of thing we just talked about with those two definitions. There's some, some uses listed like water, water facilities, sewage disposal system that I'm not sure are actually use, zoning uses. I'm not, but I'm not sure where they may have come, may have, what the thinking behind them may have been where it came from. So that's why I put them down there. Under the general regulations part, the one thing that does need to be updated is your sign section. It's an older model. The US Supreme Court case from 2015 Gilbert, yeah, Arizona. Where they came down, where they basically said that ordinances cannot regulate sign content. And that gets down to the things like contractor signs or, if, if the only descriptor of the sign is something you could be considered, is the speech of the sign, not the size or anything like that. They've said, no, you can't do that. You can only control the, the physical elements of it, not anything that relates to what could be considered speech. So there, there's some things, it's not much, but it's things that need to be cleaned up to take care, to take care of that. And then there, between, between, largely between the uses, standards to reevaluate there, I can see some of the, some of the performance sections that. To look, that need to be looked at. So. It's just my, my professional look at it. You guys take your time to look through it and see what you want. Discuss what you might want. I have extra copies here if you want to share them with the other, with the other supervisors. That's, that's perfectly fine. You know, decide what you want, want to do and let me know and I'll, we can go from there. If you want to, want to look at everything, I just, what I simply do is start like we did here. Start with, start with the section and worker and work our way through it and go, and go from there. So there are some of the, some of the things, you know, like your, it, it's an older model that's very wordy. It uses text and sentences to describe things instead of tables. So you can shorten some things by streamline, like, like the parking section. It describes every single use by a sentence paragraph. Just table it and be, and easier to read, easier format, lot shorter type of thing. So just, just as one, as one example. So. And if you have like three or four different lot size, minimum lot sizes in every single zoning district based on different sort of septic and, and water stuff. That, that's, that model exists. The newer wardens are going away from that sort of thing. So let's, and, and some of that comes from a time when packaged utility systems were a thing as opposed to just sewer and water. Like DEP is not approving private package systems anywhere. It's prohibitively expensive. You know, and a lot of that, if you have, if you have sewer but no water or water but no sewer, you have these sort of things. That's a remnant of that time when they were approving those sort of systems that they're not approving anymore.
Yeah, they clamp down on that pretty much.
Wait, so you can't just have a water system in a development?
Or do a no, you're saying?
You can, you can. It's just, the, the stand, it's more expensive to do it that way. That, that's why you don't see, you don't see a lot of, a lot of development you see now at, at a large, larger density comes off of sewer public, public systems. Or, or privately owns public systems like York Water or PA American, whereas, whereas a publicly traded company that owns it. The time, the time of, you know, a 10 or 15 lot subdivision that had its own little sewer and water plant, that it's prohibitively expensive to run those, that sort of thing from scratch nowadays. So. And, and a lot of those that, that did exist are failing. And you're seeing, so the state has a, has a, some standards that some of the publicly traded companies can step in and purchase and, and run those private plants that are, are water systems or sewer systems that are basically failing from either, from a, like, equipment side or from a financial operator side. The issue with that is the law gives them the ability to jack up the rates pretty, pretty quickly. So it's a little, it's more controversial there, but they do have the ability to do that. That's why those systems, they're not approving those anymore because the ones that are there are getting older and aren't operating very well.
Operators are another issue. You gotta have certified operators and order testing all the time.
And, and find, and finding people to do, to do that is a challenge.
It's hard, hard for like a small system that has maybe 10, 20 people on it and trying to upgrade or replace the system after 25 years. A lot of impacts on just on those people. I think it's, it's prohibitive.
It's, it's hard enough for some, for something the size of the lakes here to do.
Certified operator and.
Well, I don't know if you guys remember when, I can't think of the gentleman's name, who came in and was looking at the old Davis Farm and putting a, a community development in there. And one of his ideas was to run the water up from.
Hampton.
Hampton. And his big selling idea to the school district was that when the feds increase the standards for, or lower the standards for arsenic, you gotta update your system. That was his big selling point. That was his big selling point, but nobody listened.
I would, would, we, we've dealt with all of the, there's three, three or four different companies that work in York Water. Aqua America, PA American Water. Of, those are the three main ones. Of those three, we've always found that York Water is the one that is the, they, they very willingly respect local ordinances. If, if you, if you say, yeah, we don't want this, like I'll take, use your map up here as an example. We, we're, we're okay if it runs through here to get to, to the school district. But we don't want anything in that white area to be connected. They will run, they will, like there, there's a, there's a right of way that goes around New Oxford, down through the, the Hatterishew Farms and connects into West Vanheim Township. That I think it's a two-hundred-foot easement that they have there. They've, what they have agreed, they're, they're, they will not serve anything along that line unless they get specific approval from the municipality. You know, they've, they've run up to Hampton, the same thing. They've run up to Pine Run, Mobile Home Park, same thing. They act, actually the same thing that runs along Route Thirty from York all the way over to the county line. So they're, they're the one that's, they very willingly limit that, that to, they, they play nicely with the, that planning and growth management technique. The other ones don't. Where, that, so that's, there's trade-off. The, the trade-off is York Water Company is much more expensive than the other two. So there's, it's, you gotta balance the things out. So. But the long way of saying that those package plans and that, those, all those different lots up, minimum lots as you have, it's a remnant of that time when those package systems were being done. It might not be a hundred percent relevant anymore. It's not hurting you. But that's, you know, so. I have extra cop, extra copies here. I think I see it has it electronically too. So you can share it with.
Make sure you get one of these. Is that what you just handed out?
Um.
No.
No, that's the.
That's just, that's the.
That's the Saldo revision.
Share, if you want, if you want to give copies to other two supervisors to look at, like I said, updating Saldo is one thing. Updating, updating zoning is something different. Usually that attracts more, attracts more opinions, stronger opinions than Saldo does. So, you know, I, I, again, I'm very happy to, to, to the same thing here that I did for Saldo. That's, that's not a problem, but.
You have the time to work.
Yeah, yeah. That, that's not, not, not an issue. But given what, given it's zoning, you know, wanna make sure that everybody is on board with doing that type of thing. So, you know, talk, talk it over. Once yourselves look, you know, there and before you give, give me an answer as to which direction you want, you want to go. So. I'm just saying that from experience of doing zoning ordinances. You gotta make sure that everybody's on board, on board with looking at things before you, you go.
Does anybody have anything?
Is that our decision to make or does that have to come from the supervisors?
You have to recommend it to the supervisors.
They have to give us the authority.
I think if you're Saldo, it's not completely finished and end, you won't talk to them in the long term, correct?
It makes some sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, clean up one.
Clean up the one before you start.
Yeah, get that one enacted.
The only question I have is changes in the, any changes in the zoning may, is there anything that could come, you know, affect it?
There is, there's some change that would need to be made. If we're going right into it, I mean, yes, ideally we'd be making the changes in zoning at the same time. There's, there's nothing that, that it's, that's. It, it's, it's not, one thing is a very high probability that it's gonna cause an issue, especially since we, you tend to be moving right into it. So. You know, if, if you're, if you're concerned, we can do those sections first, but I, I don't. That's up, that's up to you. I guess, I guess I'll put it, put it this way, but I'll send Saldo in. If you wanna share it with your solicitor, you can ask, better question to ask him as to what he, what he thinks. The proper technique would be to wait or move forward. I, I don't care. I'll, if, if, I'll do, I will prepare whatever you want.
Well, one of the things that, in our zoning ordinance, we have a category called uses not provided for, which calls if someone comes in, like Millers, when they came in with their sports complex, they worked with us. But someone could come in with a curative amendment, lay it down, and you basically have to act on it. But those uses that I got down here, Echo Housing, Wedding Barns, Airbnbs, Home Lifts, those are things that are, come up to me recently. However, if you look through Andy's list, there's a lot more there that, you know, we're supposed to allow for every use under the sun in the zoning ordinance.
And, and we, we cover everything we think and then the next, next month, maybe something out of the blue, we didn't have any idea about.
So much more stuff now that people wanna do, you know, that's not out of the, or that is out of the ordinary.
I would, I would say this, the, the sections in the, in the zoning ordinance that most need to be revised as a result of the Saldo, like for Mobile Home, Mobile Home Parks and some of the, like some of the technical stuff that's Saldo only, that's in your zoning ordinance and some of the cross-references. It's not a, for, I guess fortunate, we took, we talked about the Mobile Home Park stuff out of the zone, subdivision ordinance. It's in the zone. It's, needs to be cleaned up, but it's, it's in there. So it's not like you're not protected. And the other stuff we have to clean up is cleaning up cross-references to sections that are just, there's two, just conflicts. It's, it's not, if something comes in, then they're, to meet the Saldo, they're gonna have to get, get variances or from, from the zone. So it's not creating loopholes, it's creating more work for, extra steps for them to jump through, to, to develop if, if they want it to. So it's not hurting anything. It's just not a hundred percent clean if you, if you do, if you do them separately.
Well, the two in a way should mirror each other, you're correct.
Right. Yeah. And that, that's the intent here. It's just what's, what's the, you know, is it worth waiting on the Saldo until you finish the zoning? We go through this, this whole list, it's gonna, it could be this time next year until the zoning is ready.
Yeah.
So you might wanna move on the Saldo first. You're not gonna, you're not gonna be, you're still gonna be protected in the meantime. It's just something, if something comes up, it's gonna be a little bit of a messy process.
But, I mean, the Saldo is ready to look at and send it to Todd and get it approved. Okay? So that's kind of, we're kind of done with that, right? So why can't we, number one, I think we should do it the same way with Andy that we did with the Saldo. And number two, why can't we start it right away?
What, I'd finish up the Saldo.
Yeah, I mean, we're done with the Saldo. Why can't we start with the zoning and get it started?
We wouldn't be doing any changes. We'd just be looking at changes.
Yeah, just like we did with the Salo, Saldo, you know.
Just put it on the agenda with the next supervisors.
Give it a need update.
Yeah.
Let them decide whether to go ahead and go.
Yeah.
Need update, that need updated.
So I recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve the Planning Commission to begin working, I wish I knew shorthand anymore, working, working with Andy on zoning updates.
Oh, second.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, we should maybe the rocks in second. Ron, is, is there any questions?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, say move.
Particularly your ordinance dates into ninety-nine, two thousand. I just dealt with another, it's probably now that dates to ninety-two. So if, if you're not the oldest one in the county, there's orders, there's older. But that, my recommendation there was, I can't tell you what to do, but I think you, I think you need to fix some things. So. Because I, honestly, again, for me, it's probably like here, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily have a lot of developable area or a lot of development pressure. It's, it's not a big deal. If you, if you're like down cross, you're down at fifteen and thirty and you have an outdated ordinance, you're gonna pay for it. Yeah. You know, 'cause they're, they're, when you have, there's, like, we have something, like, St. Brandon Township, Cumberland Township, they, they get a dozen plans a year, at least, you know? If, if there's something missing, it's gonna be found and exploited really quickly. Yep. So, you know, like, how, we're fixing, I thought the standards were pretty good. And then we found, found out that, you know, there's some other things we need to control here. Okay, well, we're getting that in place. It got, it, what we thought was solid, you know, we, they found loopholes that we didn't think were there.
What you're saying, I, I appreciate, you know, working with you on these things because you, you have, you're in the front line dealing with that. You know from these different townships what's happening. And we know, but we may not know everything. You can read the paper and stuff, you see.
They go for the weaker spots.
You know the inside story of the horror.
Yeah.
Horror stories and we don't know the details and you do.
Yes, for better, for better or worse, we do. There, there are more than a few occasions where, occasions where Rob and I have, have talked and, and we've, we've, we've written in a letter or a plan review or ordinance review years ago. You need to do this or, so this is gonna happen. It didn't get, it didn't get done and.
It happened.
It happened.
It happens.
You know, and. Not much, you know, we can, all we can do is put it, for us, put it on paper. It's not, you know, it's not, it's, we can't make it happen. So. Anyway, that's, that's what, what, so, well, we can go from there. If, if, let, just let me know if it gets approved, I will ship the full Saldo over to you to move forward and go from there. I just would put it out there, even though I wrote it, still do have to go through the, the review, formal review process. Needs to, needs, the public hearing needs to be held at least thirty days after you send it to us. That, that type of thing. You're gonna get a letter saying, hey, thank you for letting us help you. But, you know, there's still that process that needs to happen. And if, and if Todd has questions about something, you can all just point to myself and Scott.
So Saldo is ready to go to the, to the board and to Todd. All right.
Do we need any motions or any?
I was gonna say, do we need a motion for that?
I think your, your work is done. Your work is, here's done on it. So.
Do we need a recommendation for the board?
Usually, usually that's what, that's when it's done. That's why usually the recommendations from the Planning Commission to the Board, to Supervisors to proceed with.
So we wanna make a motion to accept the Saldo. Send the Saldo forward to the Board of Supervisors, the revised Saldo.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. This is a second, second memorial. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In that recommendation, are we also, I'm sorry, are we also saying they should show it to Todd or is that up to them?
Well, that goes without saying.
Okay, okay. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And, and like I said, if you need, need me to have something to present at this, let me know through GOS. What, what, when is your, when is the supervisors meeting typically?
Second.
Second Thursday.
Second Thursday of each month.
It's on the big board out there. I get, I get up, I get up to this, this road for this meeting and vote.
Well, you could take taxes.
Thirty-four municipalities to remember these things for.
You say April tenth.
April tenth is the second Thursday.
Yeah.
No, I'm just, I was asking to see if it conflicted with any other meeting, any other meetings I have. So, but it doesn't. So. If you, if you need me there to present something, just let, just let me know through GOS.
All right. Thank you, Andy, for your work and.
Yeah, thank you.
Continued work.
Glad to help.
Is there any other, no, any other, there's no new businesses or anything else?
The only new business was it our own thing, which we can't do anything with. That was just more informational for you. I just also wanna reiterate for everyone, large item pickup will be May seventeenth, Saturday from ten to twelve. That's not large item, I'm sorry, electronic drop.
Electronic, okay.
So if you wanna get rid of your computers and TVs, bring them down.
Does that include the big TVs?
That doesn't include the ones with, yeah, the TVs and stuff, does it?
It takes all of them.
It takes all those big monstrosities.
Yeah. I don't lift them. If you bring one, you gotta pick it up and throw it in.
I think, well, Latimer had it like six months ago and.
Well, we do it. We do it in the spring. They do it in the fall.
I know some people who brought some like box TVs and they took them.
Did they really? Wow, okay.
Is that just for residents or is that for anyone?
That's for anyone who's a customer of waste management.
My TV, that's, well, this, this.
You have a friend in the township.
It's been sitting in my garage for fifteen years.
Well, when we first started this, I had a lot of TVs come in that were sitting in barns that had dirt. Carried it, packed in there by rats.
Yeah.
I mean, there was some.
So question for you there. You said customers of waste management, but not necessarily Huntington Township residents or?
It fits, Latimer Township, Township is waste management.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you don't have trash pickup, if you're not paying waste management for your trash pickup, are you still allowed to?
No.
Okay.
You can slip me five bucks under the table, but.
You know you're unrecorded.
Twice.
Well, I've never turned anyone away, so.
Okay.
I'd rather have them drop them off here than along the road.
Yeah.
That's where they end up, along the road, and we have to pick them up.
Yeah, where at our place.
So I had, I started the question, I tried to ask.
What?
If the school has ten or twelve TVs, is that permissible to bring those up?
Oh, is that what's your question?
Get them up here.
That's what I was trying to get to.
The school?
No.
Just asking.
What do you guys do with your trash? Who holds it? Parks?
What color is the container?
Blue.
It wasn't, we were advanced before.
Is the container, what color is the container?
It might be back to waste management.
I'd say it was.
Advanced, yeah.
It is back to waste management. Advanced, no. They bought them.
That wasn't their problem.
Okay.
Because we used to be advanced.
Yeah.
Like trash?
Yeah, bring them up.
Okay. I'm not sure, we, I mean, we've gotten rid of the hordes of them, through recycling places. So there's not that many now.
Well, last time we did it, the dumpster was completely full.
Was it?
It was sticking up that they had to take it down or they couldn't haul it on the truck.
Payloader takes it down.
Is there any other discussion for the, the town? Is there any other discussion for the, the township? No, no public comment?
None.
None? Okay.
None.
Next meeting will be, what, April twenty-eighth?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, April twenty-eighth.
See, May we have reorganization coming?
It's May, right?
Yeah, May's the reorganization.
May's reorganization.
Right.
So...
So if anybody wants to campaign ahead of time for, for...
Chairman.
Chairman.
Secretary.
April twenty-eighth, yep.
Not hearing any other...
I'll make a motion, and we...
The motion's May, second. Jeff, all in favor, say aye to adjourn.
Aye.
Whatever.
Well, thank you for your comment. Please fill out these ethics forms.
I did that.
About what, man?
There's nothing to be afraid of, only if you commit a felony.